Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is now nine o'clock, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is January the 25th. It is 9:00 a.m. We're in the Central Jury Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, we are pleased to once again have with us Ms. Kim Irwin, who is the Executive Director of the Brazos Presidency Clinic, to give the invocation, and with her is her backup, as always here, Pastor Mike McMahon, who's good enough to come down here always. But Kim Irwin, who always does a great job, so welcome. Please stand.
We praise you, oh Lord, our God, King of the Universe, who sanctified us to come to your throne, Lord God, through the love of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Please help us to follow everything that you have asked us to do this day. Help our deliberations and our discernment to be towards your thoughts, Lord God, and yours only. Help each one who comes into this court today to be open-hearted and kind-hearted, to lean towards you, Lord God, to do what is right. I pray for the blessings of each one of these court members today, Lord God, that you watch over them, keep them safe, their families safe, and help them to do your will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
We join you, the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the pledge of Texas.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all very much. It was very nice. Thank you, Ms. Irwin. We really have a good special presentation today. We have a presentation of certificate award for lifesaving to C.G. Weatherford. Is that going to be you? We got Sheriff Deeds and Kim Dolander and C.G. Weatherford here. It's great to see you. This is very important. Start it over to you, Sheriff.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me this time. All my deputies work hard out there to serve and protect the citizens of Hood County, but a few go a little bit extra distance, and they're higher qualified in some ways in the medical field, and so I've got a few that do that. But C.G., on January 5th, at Walmart, we had an incident that came in. It was a city call, but all the ambulances were tied up, and so she knew that and told the dispatch that she would go and help if she could. And she responded, and there was a female with a gunshot wound to her chest and a little child that had been shot also. It was an accidental shooting. We're not investigating. That's a city thing. But anyway, Deputy Weatherford responded and took care of the incident medically till ambulance got there, and she stayed around till everything was took care of. So I appreciate her for going above and beyond the call of duty to take care of situations. You want to give a speech or anything?
No, thank you, sir. Got to get back to work.
She's got to get back to work. She's on duty today. Got to do another one.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Are you sure you don't give us a little speech here, C.G.?
I'm sure.
You sure? Okay. Well, this is what I say about all of our first responders. I am so proud of every first responder here in Hood County, whether you are a sheriff's officer, a police officer, a firefighter, a special whatever. You put your life on the line all the time for us, and because of your special training, all the citizens of Hood County are so grateful to all of you. So another special round of applause for C.G. Weatherford.
Thank you, sir.
Next on here, we've got service awards again, and plenty of them here. It's my favorite part of the program.
Yes, sir. The first one this morning is Owen Kernutt.
Why, thank you.
It's yours.
And your pin.
I need to give him a special award myself. When I first took over here, I signed blood warrants for the Sheriff's and Police Department, and I can't tell you the number of times until we got all the bugs worked out with the computer, how many times I called Owen at 2:00, 3:00, and 4:00 in the morning, and I can say that he always answered. Can you imagine that? So he gets a special award from me for that. So great. Okay, Melissa, what else do you have?
Yes, sir. Ten-year award for Kim Dolander.
Oh.
I couldn't run the sheriff's office without Kim. She's my administrative assistant, and she does so much for that office, that very integral part of keeping everything going up there. So 10 years. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'll second that. Glenn Howard, is that?
Mr. Howard is out today. He will not be here to receive his award. The next one is Shay Pendleton, 10 years.
This is a very hard-working pair right here, too. I can attest to that also. I see them all too often in my court, okay?
Shay is our mental health officer. She works really close with the Con Valley to provide services to a large caseload of kids that need a lot of extra help. So we really appreciate her.
These two really do a lot for the juveniles here in Hood County. I mean, all we need is a foster home, right, to help up here. That would be awful nice, wouldn't it, Kim? But they work very, very hard and very, very diligently, and all of the juveniles and the parents really do respect these two. So my hat is off to them. Okay, next.
The next two on the list were not able to attend today. Mr. Nelson and Janet Vickers, both 20 years. They were unable to attend.
Wesley.
There he is. Okay.
Wesley. See, that's why Wesley stayed around. Yeah. That's why Wesley's been around for 20 years.
Wesley's been with us for 20 years. He's a foreman over one of our crews, mining the south side. Glad we have him. Thank you for the job.
Mr. Nelson, one of the reason why Tech dot knows who all your department is up there, and they call me wanting your number when they get into bind? Okay, good. Congratulations, sir.
And we have one 25-year award this morning.
I don't know this guy here, though.
Is that old, huh?
Well, he must have started working when he was like 15.
12.
12.
I'm very happy to give Chad Jordan his 25-year certificate. I was in junior high when he started, but thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner. Get in here. Let me see.
This is a hard-working guy right here. I'll tell you that. He does a lot for this county and brings in a lot of money. If you owe Hood County any money, you better watch out. If you see him coming, get out your checkbook, right? Or lock your gate, one or the other. That's one thing. Okay. The next thing, I want to remind anybody that if you want to talk on any agenda item, you must fill out a public participation form and hand it to Sheriff Deeds, and Sheriff Deeds will hand it to Katie Lang, and she will number you and put it and bring it up here, and then when the proper agenda item is called, you will have your turn to speak. Okay. All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything on the consent agenda?
Yes, Judge, I would. I have one issue, not a big deal, but it needs to make a correction under Item B in the consent agenda, personnel changes. On your packet for salary changes, the third person from the top on that list is up for a certificate pay, but he's already got it. He's received it already, so we want to make sure this is not a duplicate, that he's already got the certificate pay, so it really needs to come off of this list. Just removed from the list.
Subject to the removal of the third from the top of the certificate pay, is there any other objection to the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? A motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. This brings us down to eight. Mr. Donald Lenny, we're going to convene into a public hearing to hear what Mr. Lenny has to say, so at this time, which is 9:12, we are convening into a public hearing. Mr. Lenny.
Judge, I'm asking you all, good morning, Commissioners. We've had a couple requests for the stop sign on Gibson Court. The makeup of this intersection, it's a T-intersection. Gibson actually Ts into Berry Road. And after going down and looking at it, there are some areas that's got some obstruction that they can't, at Gibson Court, they cannot look to the left and see, but it's nothing that we can fix in the right way. So by looking at it, we've decided that we do need to put a stop sign there just to alert drivers to make a full stop at that intersection. And this is in line with the rules of the road, Title VII of the Transportation Code, and also with the TMUTCD. So road operations recommend placing the stop sign on Gibson Court.
Anybody have a question or comment? Okay. If not, we're going to reconvene back into the Commissioners' Court. And again, I ask if anybody has a question or comment about the recommendation of road operations to put a stop sign on Gibson Court at Berry Road. If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Your Honor. I'll make the motion that we establish a stop sign on Gibson Court at Berry Road at the proper location.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Eagle to erect a stop sign on Gibson Court at Berry Road, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Lenny.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. Now, at this time, we're going to hear from Development, and we are going to convene into a public hearing to hear what Mr. Clint has to say.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. We have a public hearing to discuss the site development plan of Wolf Hollow Phase One Data Center in Precinct Two. This property is located on the Wolf Hollow property at 8787 Wolf Hollow Court in the Road Corridor District, and it will be served by a well and an onsite sewage facility. The court will be approving this, along with this site development plan. Environment was reviewing the onsite sewage facility permit, because you'll be approving that they receive the okay to put an onsite sewage facility there. There's no subdividing of this property for this site development plan. It will be on leased property, it'll be a 49.569 acres portion of the 195.193 acre property owned by Exelon. The site development plan proposes to construct a 10,000-square-foot warehouse and will expand the amount of servers for the data center. These servers will be accessible with a 24-foot aggregate fire lane, and the servers will be housed in individual containers. There will be a drainage ditch constructed, and Development has the certification from the engineer that the runoff leaving the property will actually be reduced downstream in the two-year, 10-year, and 100-year storm frequencies. Anybody want to speak?
Yes, we do. We have Mr. Jeff Jackson here. Mr. Jackson, from Minnesota?
Yes, sir.
I guess it's a pleasure for you to be down here. I think it's 32's a heat wave.
I think it was 20 below. My wife texted me last night. Thank you for having me and letting me escape that. So as I said, my name is Jeff Jackson. I'm the Vice President of Site Development for Compute North. First of all, I want to thank you all for your support back in November for the first phase of this project. Quick project update, we completed construction of that first phase, and it went so well that we're here today seeking an expansion of that project. We continue to grow our business relationship with Exelon, and we're excited to, at the prospect of growing our presence in Hood County. Just a couple brief notes on Compute North and the project, and then I'll answer any questions that might come up. So Compute North is one of the fastest-growing data center hosting companies in the country. We were recently recognized as the single fastest-growing company in all of Minnesota in any category or any industry. We are obviously very proud of that. We're also proud that we've had an operating facility in the city of Big Spring, Texas since 2018, and we also recently successfully completed an expansion of that data center. A couple notes on the project. If approved, the project will represent a capital investment of over $100 million in Hood County. It will employ 30 full-time technicians and one site manager who is here today. We're very excited about this project. We're very excited about growing our presence here in the business community of Hood County in Granbury, and happy to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Anybody have any questions or comments of Mr. Jackson? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for that. Welcome to Hood County. Mr. Head, what do you think? Do you recommend?
All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the site development plan as presented.
Okay. All right. Well, now, we're going to close the public hearing and go back into the Commissioners' Court, and it is now 9:17. Okay. Does anybody have a comment or question about the development plan for Wolf Hollow Phase One Data Center?
Judge, we've had several meetings with Jeff and Compute North on this, and explaining exactly what they're doing and how they're doing it, and working with Clint, our development, to make sure we get all of the things in place to make it a proper site development for that commercial property. So I don't see any problem with it at all. It's good for Hood County. It's going to be some employees and some tax dollars for Hood County, so I think it's good.
Anybody else? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the site development plan for the Wolf Hollow Phase One Data Center.
Second? We got a motion from Commissioner Cotton to approve the development plan for the Wolf Hollow Phase One Data Center, and a tie goes to Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Andrews for seconding that motion. So any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down from Minnesota, Mr. Jackson. We look forward to working with you. Okay. Next, we have financial matters. We have Ms. Becky Kidd, County Auditor.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. For today's court, your total expenditures are $235,601.72. You've also been given a list of invoices over $10,000, and the Auditor's Office has reviewed all this and recommends payment, but first, are there any questions?
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Kidd? Any comments? Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the budget.
A motion has been made by...
Excuse me. Expenditures of $235,601.72.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the expenditures in amount of $235,601.72, second by Commissioner Andrews. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero to pay the bills. What else you got, Ms. Kidd?
Judge, Commissioners, we've also completed our monthly report review. No issues with the ones that have been submitted and asked that you approve these.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, we do need to strike off that the district clerk, it shows that it's been reviewed and received and reviewed, and we need to strike that off. It has not. But with that correction, I'll make a motion to approve the financial reports.
Second? A motion has been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the financial reports from the period January 1 through January 15, with the exception of Item 8 to District Clerk, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further comment or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Now, we're down to miscellaneous. Item number one, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the following schedule for the placement of flags around the sidewalks surrounding the historical courthouse. February the 16th, 2022, install Texas flags. April the 1st, 2022, remove Texas flags and replace with CASA flags. April the 29th, 2022, remove CASA flags and replace with American flags. And July 8th, 2022, remove American flags and remove American flags. We'll see what happens after that. I think that's something that we do all the time. It's something that's very important, and I feel like that should be done, and I make a motion that we approve the placement of flags, as I've stated, into the record. Second? That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Does anyone have any questions or comment? With that, a call for the motion. All those in favor of the placement of flags, as I stated, into the record, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Item number two, consider and take appropriate action to pay for repairs done on Tanker 90 to be paid from Fund 55. Jeff, you know, every time that we put and ask for a fire ban, it seems like we get a rain within 24 hours. We need to start making a motion for fire bans more often.
I'm doing my best.
Okay, well, let's start doing that. I don't know if that affect that, but that's not the subject of what you're coming up here to speak right now, but please explain to us about the repairs on Tanker 90.
So Tanker 90, nearly a year ago or so, had issues with the tank, where the tank was actually starting to compress on itself. We sent it off for repair. We did get insurance checks to pay for a good part of this. However, it took so long, those insurance checks that we got ended up being used in maintenance to repair pumps and everything that we did last year. This invoice is for $72,515.36. If I pay that out of my maintenance budget, in fact, I don't know that I even have enough to pay for it out of my maintenance budget right now. My entire maintenance budget for the entire year was $80,000, and we've already had some large expenses with that on pump replacements on other trucks, so...
You're asking us to pay this?
Yes, sir. I'd like to request that this be paid out of Fund 55.
Okay. Have you discussed this with Ms. Kidd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Kidd, do you have any comment or question?
I do. Since we got the check last year, I'd rather see this come out of previous year.
As opposed to 55. Yes, this is supposed to say that per my conversation with Kevin and the issue that we did receive this in prior year...
Can you speak up a little bit, please, so that it's recording? Thank you.
Sorry. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Being as we did receive this insurance check last year, this vehicle was in the middle of being repaired last year, didn't get completed till this current year, one of the better solutions might be to pay for it from prior year funds, which is an easy journal entry, and I will not move the money into this line account, so it will not expand it exponentially and that budget be there for the next year. I will move it into General Administration Contract Services and pay the bill out of there.
Okay.
So it's a budget amendment. If you prefer to do it that way, instruct me to do that, and we'll go from there.
Okay. So you recommend paying for the bill out of a budget amendment?
Out of Fund 10.
Out of Fund 10.
After I process a line item transfer.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion to approve the payment for the repairs on Tanker Number 90 in the amount of $72,515.36 out of Fund 10 last year's budget.
I hear a second.
I'll second that.
Paid by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Andrews, to pay for repairs on Tanker 90 out of a budget amendment from Fund 5, from last year's budget.
Actually, Fund 10.
Fund 10. I'm sorry. Fund 10, from last year's budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right.
Still here.
Right there. You've got something else here now. Number three, Item 3, consider and take appropriate action to purchase air packs, bottles, and masks to replace remaining old equipment. Please explain that, sir.
So last year, we replaced all of the air packs on the county engines. There was approximately 40 of those that we replaced. That didn't replace all of the air packs for each of the departments. There are still many of the departments that are running on air packs that are 1998 standards. So the air packs, I know we increased their subsidies this year, but the design for that was so that they could be purchasing bunker gear. Their bunker gear runs about $3,000 to $3,500 bucks a set. These air packs are $61.91 as of today. February 1, Scott has a price increase to $66.23 per unit. Right now, for the 66 air packs, the 82 bottles, and the 66 face masks, we're looking at a cost of $524,414. Now, Scott has their price increase that goes into effect February 1, which would then make it $556,360. So that is a price difference of, I have it here, hang on. Now, I don't like coming and giving you guys "or else" deals, but I would like to remind you, we did talk about this on the May 6 special call meeting. The fire departments had all identified this as a critical need, but I was asked to kind of let the budget kind of settle down and do what it's going to do, and come back and approach the court after the 1st of the year. So here we are now after the 1st of the year, and not that I'm trying to put a deadline on anybody by any means, but if we order after February, we're going to be paying a little bit more for these packs.
And this is a critical need?
It is a critical need, yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, I didn't put on here which fund to pay for this out of, because I know there was some discussion as to how we might be able to fund this, and I'm not sure where that landed, but...
You have any idea about that, Ms. Kidd?
No.
Which fund we can get the money? We would like to hear from the Auditor, please.
I thought you'd write a check, sir.
No. How about you writing a check?
Well, just not use my money.
And get Ms. Lee into sign with you.
I've talked to a few of you about this, and if you use Capital Projects money, you're going to wipe out half your budget, the remaining money for the year. But if that's what you want to do, there's a little over $1 million that's unallocated. This will take up half of that. So anything that comes up after that, just whatever you want to do, I'm happy to do anything you guys tell me to do, but I want you to be aware of where we are with that money.
Well, what's our alternative other than for Capital Projects?
There is no alternative.
Well, I think that pretty well makes up our mind. I think this is critical that we need for our firefighters, who can't expect these people to run into fires and risk their lives like they do without the proper equipment. So do I hear a motion that...
Yes, I move that we pay for the purchase of the air packs, bottles, and masks to replace the remaining old equipment for the departments out of capital funds.
Second? Motion has been made by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Eagle, to take money out of capital funds to pay... out of capital funds to pay for the purchase of air packs, bottles, and masks to replace the remaining old equipment for the firefighters. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action regarding a response to the petition for writ of mandamus filed in the Supreme Court of Texas on December 30, 2021. Mr. Mills, we'll hear from the county attorney first, and then we have Harold Granick, who will also speak on this topic. Okay.
Well, there's, I guess we can, at a basic level, explain it for the public, but there was a pro se application for writ of mandamus to the Supreme Court, pro se meaning without a lawyer. So, a couple of local citizens filed this basically to question and even nullify election results in Hood County based on not having proper certification of equipment, or I'm not sure if I'm explaining that well, but the machines weren't properly certified. And this was filed, as the thing notes, about three weeks ago or four weeks ago. I think, to boil it down, we've got three options in response. One would be an extreme. On one end, we could hire some law firm that really specializes in this and spend however much money that might be, probably five figures at least, to write a very comprehensive, thorough brief, and then we would be pretty safe, I think, if we did that. The other extreme is to do nothing, and then the middle option maybe would be, I could, our office could just more or less wing it. I mean, my, this is not my expertise, you know? I'm not, this is not where I am trained or whatever, but, I mean, we could file something just to have on file at the Supreme Court level. A couple of weeks ago, and I emailed all of y'all on this, but I talked to a clerk from the Supreme Court, and I said, "What do we need to do here?" And he says, "Generally, a pro se writ like this will be denied on its face. It will not be granted." And I said, "Okay, that sounds good." And I said, "Well, what if it is granted? Could it be granted by default? In other words, if we don't respond, could they just say, 'Okay, well, you didn't respond, and boom, we're granting this'?" And he said, "No. If Supreme Court says that this is viable, if this has any merit to it, then they will tell us, 'Okay, you need a response within X number of days,' and then we get after it and write the response." So, after hanging up the phone with him, I thought, "Okay, I don't think that there's a lot of problem with just not doing anything," and then, because I don't want to spend the money and not have to. So, my take was just wait and see what they do, and then if they say we need a response, then we'll do a response, so.
Let me add to that, please. I like the do-nothing option out of the three, and here's why. This, it starts out as a writ of mandamus, ends up as a declaratory judgment under the federal rules. It's kind of all over the place. I clerked for the Supreme Court back in the mid-'90s, and the first thing we do is look at jurisdiction, and I don't even think this is going to pass the jurisdictional requirements. So, I agree with you. I think we just kind of wait and see what happens, because there's really nothing to respond to, in my opinion, at this time.
Dr. Granick, you want to respond?
Certainly not to the legalities of it, but I see this issue of sequential balloting comes up and takes up time. It sometimes appears to be showboating. I note that the ancient Greeks, when they came up with democracy, when they were voting on whether to exile someone, they either dropped in a white ball or a black ball. They didn't have sequential balls, and that democracy seemed to work pretty well. I'll leave it to the judgment of the lawyers here as best to do, but I wish we would move on. The disadvantage of sequential balloting is it's great if you're voter number six, and you want to find out that the machines actually counted correctly, but it also means that if you're voter number six, someone else can look up and find out how you voted, and that defies the privacy of voting.
Thank you.
With all due respect, Dr. Granick, this writ has nothing to do with, has not a word about sequential numbering. It's about certification of the equipment. But thank you for your comments.
Relevant to the lack of sequential balloting?
Not really, but thank you.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mills, you know, writ of mandamus is, they're so rarely granted anyway, and I'm talking about having great lawyers, or 10 lawyers in big law firms on either side. So, I'd agree with you that we should do nothing, and agree with Commissioner Eagle in that regard. We would still, in the rarity that they would grant the writ, we would still have an opportunity to reply.
Right. And at the extreme, the remedy is so draconian that, I mean, it would potentially undo the elections that all of us have won over the last several years. I mean, then what? Like, we're going to revote back to three, four years ago? I mean, it seems insane, right? I mean, how do you do that? So, anyway, I can't see that this would really be granted, but again, like I said, if they wanted to contemplate it, then they'll give us a chance, so.
I have a question. Now, this is specifically aimed at the voting equipment. Should we not, I mean, do ESNS and Hart not have people that can answer this sort of thing, or at least get a heads up that there may be something coming? Should we reach out to them?
That'd be a good question for Stephanie, certainly, and this was all kind of on the Hart watch. Excuse me.
Well, no, this was mostly.
I'm wrong. ESNS, now we're on Hart. I had that backwards. So, yeah, I mean, we need to make sure we're not messing up going forward. I mean, this is notice that, you know, we got to make sure our ducks are in a row, but I can't see that the old elections would be nullified. So, yeah, bring that up with Stephanie and make sure that we're on that.
Okay.
I think one of the questions on the certification, which I'm still looking into, is does the Secretary of State certify it? Do the certification, or do the equipment software manufacturers like Hart and ESNS do their own work, certify it, and say, "We've certified it, signed it, and give it to the Secretary of State"? I'm not sure yet. That question could come up, but I'm still looking into that myself, because I understand that the software on both of these units, whether it's Hart or ESNS, is proprietary to get into it. So, creates an interesting dichotomy there. So, I'm kind of looking into that, but again, for this matter?
Right.
I think we just kind of lay back and wait and see what happens.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Good.
Notice that the people on my right are agreeing with me on this, so just throwing that out there.
Okay. All right. Any further comment or question from anyone? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we make, take no action.
Second that.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle that we take no action regarding the petition for writ of mandamus filed in the Supreme Court, and that is seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any other question or comment? All those in favor of taking no action to the petition for writ of mandamus, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five-zero to take no action. This brings us to item number five, consider and take appropriate action to provide driver's license services under the supervision of the tax assessor collector. Good morning, Ms. Ferguson.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Yeah, appreciate that. That's. He needed that.
Good. Thank you.
Katie. Do we have that one? Okay.
This is just concerning the driver's license office that with Jack Wilson, Commissioner Wilson, about having it put under the tax assessor's office, since it kind of goes hand-in-hand with my department.
In your letter that you just sent here, it says, "I, Andrea Ferguson, of the Hood County Tax Assessor Collector, do assume the responsibility of running the driver's license office located in Granbury, Texas."
Yes.
Then signed by you.
You know, the two applicants that have already been screened, interviewed, among other applicants, their paperwork has been processed within the county and is in the process of being, going through the state background check at this time, and then they will start their, once that happens, then they will start their training cycle, you know, for that, and they will be under, if I understand correctly, they'll be under your bond.
Under my bond, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Any other questions or comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Right now, the budget for these two ladies is in with DPS. Please instruct me to do a line item transfer to move the salaries into Andrea's line account, the tax assessor line account.
Okay. I guess.
Make that motion.
A motion had been made to move the two employees from.
Department of DPS.
Into the tax collector's assessor's office.
I'll second that.
A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton, seconded by Commissioner Wilson, to move, make a line item transfer from the Department of Public Service into the tax collector's office for the two employees that will come up there handling the driver's licenses services through the tax collector's office. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, Ms. Jeanne Stacks, to come up here and discuss and take appropriate action to authorize a county judge and appropriate officials to sign all the documents, which is a bunch of them, related to TCG number 7220191. Ms. Stacks.
The grant administrator sent these four items over. We are needing to proceed with the items for the AMUD grant in the sewer extension in Port Ridgely. That's what the Texas Community Development Grant Number 7220191 is for. The engineering on this grant is complete, and we need these documents to proceed and have the county reimburse, so we can pay the engineering firms, and then we will proceed with the connections as soon as AMUD gets the work complete.
So, we need to sign these before they're going to give us the money? Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good. I'll sign it.
Yeah. I'll sign it, too. That means we're going to get this money, right?
Yes, sir.
This is the first time that you've given us all this paperwork to sign, so I'm going to go ahead and sign this and trust you, okay? So, after we take a vote, so all those in favor of signing all these, yeah.
I'll make.
Does anyone here will make a motion to sign all these documents here regarding the item under number five for the environmental?
Hey, Judge, could I, I got one question. We already did all this, right? We're just finalizing everything?
Permanently for him to sign. Yes, it's already been approved.
Yeah, I'll second.
I move that we.
I'll second when he makes.
Authorize the county judge and appropriate officials to sign the documents related to CDDG 7220191.
I'll second.
By Commissioner Wilson to sign the appropriate documents that we've already. Any further comment or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five-zero. This may be.
You're getting close, Judge.
Pretty close to a record now.
You're getting close.
Do not leave anybody, because we're going to consider a special meeting up here for the fire ban.